Good evening, everyone. With the time being approximately 6:00 PM on Tuesday, August 22, 2023, I'll call this meeting of the Webster School Committee to order and ask that we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the July 18 meeting. Is there any discussion about those minutes? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve them.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you please pull the committee?
Member on the House?
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Yes, motion passes. And the next item on the agenda is a superintendent's report. Good evening, Mrs. Perangeli.
Good evening, and thank you. I hope everybody enjoyed the tours. We had the opportunity to walk through the buildings tonight and see the status of each building, including the modulators, which will be ready for our incoming staff next week. The buildings are in great shape, and I wanted to give a shout out to all of our staff, our custodians and our IT staff and everybody for really taking those buildings to the next level. When you see them at the end of the year and you look at the floors and, you know, they see a lot of activity. There's a lot of footsteps and a lot of scuffs and bangs going through those buildings. And they tackled them and cleaned them up, and the floors are shiny and everything is new. I hope you can see at our modulators, we are pretty close to completion. They are working diligently. They will be coming out this week to finish with their waxing and cleaning them up. We will review a traffic pattern later, but I believe we will be ready for the start of school on Monday, August 28. So we're excited about that. First item I have for you is our personnel update. We had a few resignations. We had Gretchen Tucker, who was Grade 7 ELA, Jill Rechia from Park Ave, and Matthew Jaeger, our technology person at Park Avenue. We have a complete list of positions instead of just giving you new. Some of these might be repeats, but it was a little easier and organized to show you everything that we have to date. So at Park Ave, we have a new assistant principal. Her name is Ms. Jessica Ahoski. Is that right? Ahoski, Ahouski. And I should know that. I'm pretty good with Polish names. We have Elizabeth Way Betts, a special education teacher, Carrie Bradshaw, special education. And these are all Park Ave. I'll let you know when we go on to a new school. We have Anya Kedony, who is a librarian, Kathleen Garrity, adjustment counselor, Regina McLellan, an adjustment counselor, Weste de Oliveira, who is our family liaison. We have Sarah Coyle, who is a Grade 1 teacher. Amanda, I'm going to mess this one up. Gottlieb? Gottlieb? Gottlieb, Grade 1 teacher. Maritza Rivera, who is our school year admin assistant. Melissa Doobie is a building float sub. We have Kristin Sari, para. Emma Bono, para. And Lindsay Markham, who is a para. We have Michael Mitcheke, who is a para. Erin Ethier is an ABA. Kristy Elmwood, an ABA. As you can see, we still have a few vacant positions over at Park Ave. We have a vacant special education position. We have four vacant para positions, one ABA position, and a vacant built-in float sub position. So we're still actively looking, and we just want to welcome all of our new Park Ave staff. Webster Middle School, we have Victoria Kubicki, who is Grade 7 math. She is returning. She has extended her license. We have Megan McGovern, who is Grade 7 math. We have Janet Robbins, Grade 5 Math and Science. Ashley Carl, Grade 5 ELA and Social Studies. Rachel Blash, Grade 5 ELA and Social Studies. Jonathan Russell, our new librarian. Dorothy Miller, a behavior specialist. Jared Karp, a building float sub. Renee Mosley, a building float sub. She is returning from last year. And then we have Delaney Rose, who is an ABA. We still have a vacant special education position, two ABA positions that are vacant, and four para-professional positions that are vacant. At Bartlett High School, we have Kathleen Catterett, who is our band, new band person. We have Ellen Windus, math. Christina Kalelo, math. David Galliter Levy, math. Antonia Rodriguez, new ELL. Carla Harder, sped. Barbara Smaller, our re-engagement specialist. George Spitz, who is a building float sub. He is returning from last year. And Shaheen Balak, who's a para. As you can see, we have a few vacant positions. We have a vacant ELA position, which I believe is in the process of being filled. We have a vacant building float sub. We had a transfer from the middle school. We had Julie O'Connor, who has now taken the biology position. We have a vacant sped position, a vacant ELL position, and four vacant para-professional positions. And then at the district wide, we have been unsuccessful in filling our school psychologist position. We just recently had the resignation for the technology. So that is advertised. We're looking for a technology support, and we are looking for four cafeteria positions. So we will continue to look to fill those vacant positions, but overall, I think we're in OK shape for the start of the school year. And we would, you know, I just want to take a moment to welcome all the new staff. We had the opportunity, and I'll go into a little later on with new teacher orientation. But we had the opportunity to meet and spend some time with them today, and we'll continue on that tomorrow. Any questions about new staff or positions? OK, moving in under instructional leadership. So the district and school instructional leadership team met on Wednesday, August 16, at Nichols College. We spent the morning on a district prioritization and how data was used in the development and support of that. We then discussed with the ILT how to support I priority. Our state partners, the SSOS were there, and Dr. Mackay. And they spoke about culturally responsive instructional practices and how that can support our instructional priority. And then we spent the afternoon reviewing our student-based coaching model. The training and the presentation was presented by Diane Swinney, who actually developed the model. So it was nice to have our ILT members here about what an instructional coach model is. We're doing a student-centered coaching model and how we are here to support the staff. And coaching is just not something that is used for maybe teachers in need of additional support. It's for all teachers, anybody, to help instructional practices in the classroom. So it was a great day. I think everybody was engaged. I love the collaboration that we're seeing from all team members during the day. And I think they were excited and ready for the school year to come and will help us roll out our new instructional priority. As we are having a new teacher orientation this week. That was August 22 today and will continue tomorrow. I want to give a huge shout out to Dr. Mackay for organizing that. Her and Michelle Bedney put a lot of work into making these two days flow for our staff, making them feel welcome and really giving them a leg up for their start of school. Today was a lot of reviewing district policies, procedures, how to set up your email, getting online with all the necessary tools that you need to start the school year, making sure that they can access everything they need to access for the start of school. This afternoon, they had an overview of Alice, our training, our safety training that we will be doing. And they'll be here tomorrow morning for some curriculum access to get into all the curriculum software. And then we take a tour of the town, and they're going to have time to spend with our building principals. Is there anything you would like to point out about new teacher orientation?
I think that one of the highlights I'd say was...
Can you turn your mic on?
One of the highlights this morning was the very beginning when, I think, you asked the staff, Mrs. Sadiki, you asked the new staff, like, why Webster? And I was very happily touched by the responses about the kind of impression that they had. Multiple folks talked about great first impression, second impression, third impression. I came, I felt welcome. You know, I left my interview energized and enthused about joining the teams. And so we were very pleased to support and welcome this kind of energy into Webster and fold them into the group.
Are there any questions to the instructional update? No? OK, moving on. So under family and community engagement, I'm really happy to report that on Thursday, August 17, the high school held a freshman barbecue for incoming families. Mr. Collins reviewed policies, practices, and answered questions from incoming freshmen and their parents. The students got to take a tour throughout the building from other students that participated here. And then they closed out the night with a nice barbecue outside with our tour guide of the evening, Mr. Al Young over here. He played chef that night and manned the grill and along with some of the staff that came. So I want to thank the staff that came out to support our high school, to support our incoming freshmen and for making that night a success. So I want to thank you, and I want to thank Mr. Collins for that. That was great. It's nice to welcome them and get them off to a fresh start. Also, on Monday, August 21, Ms. Peterson held an open house for our incoming 5th graders. I am happy to report that when I went over there, we had many parents and students coming in the buildings and picking up their schedules, getting packets of information, going to see their classrooms, and really just asking questions about sports or extracurricular activities. And it's a really great way to outreach to our families and to make students feel welcome and get rid of the anxiety a little bit for any newer incoming 5th graders as they come. So thank you for that. And then I'd just like to point out that our food service department has wrapped up their summer feeding program. I definitely want to give a shout out to our summer food service team. They do an amazing job. I want to give a shout out to Kelsey for her leadership for them and really working to support our families and our community. This summer, we picked up additional days down at the library by adding Wednesdays, including more onsite activities with a partnership with Project Bread. UMass Amherst also came down to do a demo for our families on cool ways to consume fruits and veggies over the summer. They made smoothies for our families and just talked about healthy habits. We've seen an increase at our attendance for our summer food program. And I want to thank the library for their partnership. I know we've been having many discussions, and we look forward to teaming up with them and their support for that summer food program down there. And just from our partnerships with bringing in fresh foods and vegetables and stuff. At our next meeting, we just received notification that we received a grant from New England Dairy, which provides equipment for the district to make smoothies. So Kelsey's always looking for creative ways to add healthy items to our menu. We're going to be starting out adding those smoothies at the middle school and high school, and hopefully, we'll be bringing them down to the elementary. But looking for creative ways to get fresh local food into our students' hands to provide healthy lunches. So I want to thank her for her efforts on that in moving the food service program in a great direction. I'm really happy about that. Are there any questions about that? No? I do want to give another shout out for our online enrollment. It has gone extremely well, and it certainly... I was a little concerned, I'm not going to lie, when it first rolled out because I thought it might be a little difficult for our families in accessing the technology and needing assistance with online. But they have really embraced, and it really has decreased the amount of traffic in the building. There were times at this time of the year that we had families waiting, lines of waiting, and that we were asking people to come back. Desiree Moniz and Lori have been handling the load coming in. Desiree has spearheaded it, and the nurses are doing a lot of the approval online. She's working with people and new families on how to upload documentation, and most of them are doing a fantastic job at it. So it's really been a benefit, I think, to the school system. It actually, I think, has made it easier for our families. Sometimes there's follow-up and questions, but we're not making families coming back and forth all the time and trying to get into the buildings and have access to us where they can do it from their phones. They can do it from computers. So once the summer's over and we get into school, we'll have a debrief with the nurses and the whole team to sit down and say, OK, what worked? What didn't work? Is there anything that we can improve on? Any kind of systems that we need to... Any little flaws or anything that we need to address? But just to really wrap it up and see, you know, what worked and what didn't work, and how can we improve on that moving forward? But I really do want to thank Desiree for the amount of work and time that she's put into that. I have some estimates in enrollment numbers. They're not hard numbers because I might have missed some of them coming out. But I know the middle school is over 600 students, and there are still pending enrollments at the middle school. So there are some bigger classes coming in. At the elementary, I think we are around 750, I want to say. And she has, and you have pending enrollments. I know there are many enrollments that haven't been processed yet. Desiree has a list going. And then I think we are around 350 to 60 at the high school. So, and I know those numbers are changing by the moment. So they will be increasing, I'm sure, as the start of school and we get families in and those last-minute move-ins. Are there any questions about that? No? OK. I did want to show, and I forgot to hook it up, so maybe I won't do it, but I will speak about it and I will point people in the right direction. As you know, with the construction going on at the high school and the middle school grounds over here, there are going to be some traffic updates that are going to need to... Traffic patterns that are going to be changing throughout the campus. We had a forum for parents and families on August 16. It was a Zoom forum. We thought that would be easier where we had the map of the site. And up, we had about, I think, five parents, maybe four or five parents only show up to that. We have put the information out on our website, so it is there. We did record the Zoom, and that is also there. So they can see the map of the traffic pattern online. What is going to happen is that if you are coming in from the Lake Parkway... So if you're coming in from the Lake Parkway entrance, you're going to pull into the high school area. And at the Y, if you were going to the middle school, you used to take a left. That is no longer going to be the case. In order to enter from the middle school and you're coming in from Lake Parkway, you want to keep right at the fork. You want to go like you're going to the high school, but you want to stay in the right-hand lane. The buses will be coming in, and the buses will be in the left-hand lane. Students and staff, parents can continue on the right lane if they're going directly to the middle school. If they are going to the high school, they can follow, stay in the left lane. The buses will turn in the loop to drop students off. The parents will continue straight, and there's going to be a drop-off area that they can pull over. So that'll be painted for them to pull over where students will get out. Buses will continue through the loop. Upon exit, buses will come out of the loop, and they will continue in the left lane and then go over to the middle school and drop off in the loop there. Parents will continue to go around back at the middle school. And then the most important thing is that the exit now for the middle school driveway is going to be a one-way out. So nobody will be able to come in coming down Poland Street. That is going to be a two-lane exit only. And we will have support on opening day there because I know it's busy enough without the traffic pattern. So it's going to be an adjustment for anybody. So anybody entering the schools from Poland Street, coming down Poland Street, they're going to have to continue through, straight through by the tennis courts and loop around the high school to follow that traffic pattern. And if you go online on our website on one of the updates at the bottom, you can click on the maps. You can see the drop-offs. You can watch the recording. We've tried to answer any questions that we had. One thing that I do want to point out is that after the buses drop off at the high school, that circle is going to be shut off. So we will not have any traffic coming in once the buses are done because students will be walking back and forth to modulars. So for their sake and safety, we are shutting that off. So any parents who are coming to school tardy, late, any drop-offs during the day or maybe pickups from the nurse's office, there are parking spots now painted down the road a little bit before the circle. Parents can park there and walk up to the entrance, the cafeteria entrance, where there'll be administrative staff there to allow them in, to provide for any dismissals or anything like that. So I know it's going to be a learning curve for a little bit. It always is the first week anyways. It's always a lot of traffic. Everybody pitches in. They do a great job moving the cars through, getting parents off. So just parents, staff, need to know to give themselves a little extra time on the start of school, that Thursday, that Friday, that following week because the traffic is usually pretty backed up. The same thing for Park Ave. That initial few days, you've got to have those last-moment hugs before you send your kids off to school. Those kindergartners or their first graders. So, and that extra special time. So just give yourself a little extra time. Be patient. You know, we understand we're patient. We do our best to get the day going as normal, but we understand there's going to be delays. It's going to be a little slow. But we are confident that the pattern will pick up after a few days, and we'll make sure that we have additional support. I know our local police department will be there helping us. We have our crossing guard. I'm trying to get an additional crossing guard to help with some of the support and crossing. But I think we will be good to go. Are there any questions about the traffic pattern? I don't want any confusion about that. So if you feel like I need to clarify anything or that I've missed anything, please let me know.
Just one clarifying question, Mrs. Perangeli. For parents of Bartlett students that are dropping off their student, where should they be going in their vehicle? Because they can't go in the bus loop, right?
Correct. So they can go in the left lane, but they're going to go past the bus loop, and there's going to be a drop-off area in front of the other loop, right? The secondary loop. There'll be a pull-in there. You're not going to pull through the loop, but there'll be an area there where they can drop off. The kids will be dropped off, and then they'll be instructed to go to the sidewalk and come in the admin entrance.
So they'll be in the left lane? And then, as you pointed out, the parents for the middle school will stay in the right lane?
Correct.
OK.
Yep.
All right, great.
Yep.
Thank you.
Do you want to clarify? Is everything good? You comfortable with that? OK, great. OK. So we are continuing to make website improvements and updates from any time we get feedback or anything from the staff. So we're continuing to add and utilize it. So we are excited to have... Get back to school and start having a procedure in place where our IT staff will be updating that. If you ever see anything that you think needs to change or any feedback or anything, please shoot me an email or Michelle an email. We're happy to make those changes and listening to feedback as we roll that out. I want to thank them for all of their work on that. They are continuing to improve and to add. So we appreciate Michelle and John for their efforts. And then on Thursday, August 24, I have our initial safety meeting scheduled. So that'll be a meeting where we have our local safety officials. We'll have the police chief, the fire chief, our EMS out. Our building principals will be here. We'll talk about our safety protocols for the upcoming year, make sure we get all of our inspections and things on the books. We'll also talk about the modulators and the grounds over here, make sure that we have all of our spots laid out for fire drills and everything we need to know, and make sure that they're communicating any safety needs for us. So that way, as we move through the school year, we are comfortable with all the buildings and their safety needs. We usually also have, I don't think they have yet, but our building inspectors usually will walk through the buildings every year. That should be happening. If not, the end of this week. It'll be early next week, but they usually come before our staff are in. So if they haven't, I would expect them soon, and they'll walk through and flag anything that they think is of any concern to them. But I think our buildings are in really good shape. And that's all I have for you under superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mrs. Perangeli.
Thank you.
You paused a couple times for questions. Just want to take a quick second to see if anyone has any questions or comments. Hearing none, the next item is the business manager report. And it seems you're still wearing that hat.
I'm slipping my hat backwards. So under building committee update. So we were scheduled to have a building committee last week. That was postponed until this Thursday evening, August 24. We postponed it a week just because it has been so busy with everything going on and getting to the modulators. They figured they would have a much more solid update to give the building committee and a status on where we're at with all the changes that are going on. The committee recently welcomed a new OPM, Mr. Mike Reeve. He replaced John Bates, who is moving on in his career. So we wish him the best and welcome Mike. Mike has been a great addition. He has wasted no time getting on board with the project and getting up to speed. We also have a new addition, Mr. Chad Healy, who is also with Caria's. His focus is the modulators and making sure the day-to-day stuff is going on. He spends a couple days on-site and is really keeping an eye on the modulators and being the point person and making sure the work is getting done and helping us. We're on a short-time window, making sure we have everything completed for the start of school. So he is on top of things and is a constant in the modulators. So we are hopeful, like 99.9% hopeful, that we are going to be in the modulators on Monday with our staff. But we'll make any modifications needed. But they are confident that we will be in there and ready to go for the start of school year. And that's all I have for building committee right now. Any questions on the building, the project, or anything like that? Yeah, great. Next item I have is maintenance update. So as we walked through the buildings, we talked about a little bit about the repairs that have happened. At the Webster Middle School, the big repair was the bathroom. I want to give David Anis a huge shout out. That was a big project that happened over the summer. As you could tell by looking at the bathroom, you wouldn't know that it was totally gutted out, pretty much. The partitions were pulled out. The floor was ripped up. They had to dig through across the entire bathroom through about six inches of concrete. And then the dirt was piled up all around to try and fix that repair of blockages that we were seeing last year. The pitching on that pipe was not, it had settled down. And the contractor believed that that... Putting in that new pipe, digging that up and making sure we have pitched to that pipe would fix the problems that we have over at the middle school. So they spent a big part of summer doing that repairs along with cleaning the buildings, along with moving classrooms and getting us ready. So I want to give a huge shout out to the team at Webster Middle School, the custodial team. They are doing, they have done a great job, and we appreciate all their hard work and efforts. We also had a new steamer that was ordered for Webster Middle School. We also had a new steamer that was ordered for Webster Middle School. One had broken last year. That has been replaced. It is in and running. So all we're waiting for now is a demo for the staff to come out and operate the new steamer. It's always exciting. If you like to cook, they, they love their new equipment over there. So we're happy about that. And they will be ready for the school year. At Bartlett High School, we had nothing major going on. It was just the overall cleaning. And if you hear Al tell me I just said nothing major going on, I think he would shake me. But there has been major stuff going on, but he has handled it like a charm. He's a trooper. They all are. They handle the moves and, you know, and do whatever we ask them to do. So we appreciate their hard work. The building looks good. We didn't have to touch C-section because C-section is coming offline. And the modulators will be coming online. But again, a huge shout out to the custodial staff at the high school for all of their work. It has been a big, busy summer all the way around between the three buildings. I don't think people understand how much work is actually done in the buildings for cleaning and maintenance. Because they have a very short window of time because we have summer programs going on. So they're always planning and coordinating around these programs and getting ready for this move. You know, I'm just, you know, I see Mr. Peranto sitting here. He's been working every day, emptying and cleaning and pitching in and emptying storage. I mean, this building has been here for a while and we have built up a lot over the years. And so it's taken a big effort from a lot of people to really get to the building to where it is today. So they all deserve a big thank you and our appreciation for that. And then Park Ave is still in the process of cleaning. They're really in good shape for the start of school. They did their moves. And the district offices, we are putting in our additional offices. Those are getting close to completion. So there's been a lot of stuff going on in the buildings by all. And if you, if you go and you talk to any of the guys, you wouldn't know it because they're always happy. They're always just, you know, pretty much smiling and say, whatever you need, we'll get it done. So thank you to everybody for their hard work in getting us to this point where we're ready to start school. And you walk through our buildings and they shine and they look beautiful. And they take a lot of pride in our buildings. And then we recently had our sprinkler inspections that were done in all of our schools. So we are, we are getting everything done and we will, we will be ready for day one. Any maintenance questions? No? All right, I'm rolling through. A quick transportation update. So our transportation routes have been updated and posted online. They are on our website for families. If anybody has any question, they are welcome to shoot me an email or give me a call and I will get back to them and answer their questions. It's actually been kind of quiet, so I'm not sure why. I'm getting a little worried about that because I don't know if it's just people not in mode yet for the start to school. But usually I expect, you know, we'll start seeing some activity soon. But the bus routes are there and we will answer any questions and do our best to work with our families to make sure they feel comfortable with the transportation. And then in other updates, I am working on closing out the grants and the budget. We have been working, Dr. Mackay and I going through all the grants and closing them out along with special ed. So I expect to be done with our budget by the end of this week, I'm hoping. And the reason for that is part of, we are upgrading our MUNIS system. We've talked about that before. We're upgrading to a new system. So the town would really like to have our fiscal year closed out. So the new year will start and if there's any issues, we'll take care of them in the old system before we upgrade to the new system. So I will make sure I have that done and we will be ready to go. We have started the FY '23 audit process. So I have gotten a couple of calls from the auditor just asking for information. That's what they do at this time of year. They're just looking and collecting data. So we send them over whatever they need. And we are on track. The state budget was approved at the end of July. So we are good with our budget. We are in good shape. And we are ready to rock and roll for the start of school. So we are ready to go. And that concludes the business manager's report. Any questions?
Thank you, Mrs. Prangely.
Thank you.
Any questions from anyone? No? Okay. The next item on the agenda under old business is the third and final reading of policy IMG Animals in School.
Yep. So that policy is in your packet again for your review. So I don't know if there's any final questions or outstanding. No, it wasn't? No.
I'm good there?
So they need a motion, right? Yep.
I'll entertain a motion to approve policy IMG Animals in School as presented.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Laurie, would you please pull the committee?
Yes.
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 Yeah. Yes, motion passes. Thank you. And the next item on the agenda under new business is the approval of employee handbook.
Thank you. So in your packet, you should have a copy of the employee handbook. On the cover page outlines any changes. We removed the COVID protocols from the listing. I was pretty happy about that, taking those out. On pages five through six, we updated the school and administration information. And then we just did some minor changes in names, replacements of staff, Cheryl Spink to Christina Radlo. And then on page 23, we eliminated the verbiage under the COVID-19 procedures and policies. So no major changes to our employee handbook for this year.
Are there any questions from the committee about the employee handbook and the revisions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve it.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Laurie, would you please pull the committee?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion passes. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the substitute handbook.
Thank you. So in the substitute handbook, you can see on the cheat sheet on the front, we updated names throughout the handbook on page four. And this is the theme across the handbook. We've increased our sub rates, again, trying to be competitive with our local partners to help support the needs of the building. So we changed our daily teacher sub rate from $100 to $115. We changed our long-term sub rates from $135 to $145. If you have an associate, it's $110 to $120. Our nursing rates went from $150 a day to $160 a day. And our paraprofessional in ABA went from $85 to $100 a day. And then on page six, we increased our administrative assistant substitutes from $15 to $16 an hour. And our cafeteria substitutes from $15 to $16 an hour. Trying to keep competitive with our local communities in order to bring in some support.
Great. Are there any questions or comments from the committee about this? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the substitute handbook as presented.
So moved.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Laurie, would you please pull the committee?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion passes. And the next item on the agenda is the approval of the Bartlett High School student handbook.
I am going to turn that over to Mr. Collins and Ms. Neves.
Good evening. Welcome back, almost, right? To a wonderful school year ahead of us. Mrs. Neves is with me this evening and she's going to outline with you a few of the changes to our handbook this school year.
It, on the change sheet that I gave you, it looks like there's a lot. What I did was I really aligned with the Webster Middle School handbook. Anything that was in theirs that we didn't have, I did make sure we had it, from National Honor Society to Student Council, all of the pieces that our parents should have known or our kids should have known before that exist, that we didn't have, and we added in. Just, and we're, like I said, we really aligned with the Webster Middle School handbook to bring it up, the language and everything else up with us. So I updated all of the information, the district information, the letter from Mr. Collins. We put in the new transportation protocols for drop off and pickup inside of the handbook. One of the things that we updated is our, all of our students, we have a grant-funded student planner this year. So our hall passes, everything's going to be into the student planners instead of paper. Tardy to school, tardy to class, we updated that policy. They're no longer, if students are tardy to class or tardy to school, going to miss due to the lockout procedure of the whole class because we have 85-minute classes. So we don't want them missing that much academic time. So they will still be marked tardy. They'll still report to there where parents will be called. So they're notified right away. And then an administrator will touch base with those students regarding how many times they've been tardy and what, or if there's a consequence to go along with it. One of the other changes that we updated was the athletic eligibility. And we had to do that per the MIAA with our block scheduling. So with a four-by-four schedule, in order to be eligible, and Tony will go over this probably again, but in order to be eligible for every quarter, they need to be passing two, at least two five-credit courses of the four, or the equivalent of, so two, two-and-a-half credits courses will equal one five-credit course. So they have to be passing in total 10 credits in order to be eligible for the next quarter to play. To go into the fall, they must pass four for the full, for the full year going into, with a four-by-four schedule. So they can take from 10 to 12 courses now every school year. So they have to be passing at least four, five-credit courses and be promoted to the next school year in order to participate in the fall. We've updated that in this handbook as well as in Tony's handbook. And we took the language right from the MIAA. And the other big update that we made is to align with the Webster Middle School was we took out the very specific consequences in our list of disciplinary actions. So that we put the range, like they have the same language. It can range from a teacher conference to a suspension with progressive consequences as they go up. So we just wanted it really to, to be the same language. When the kids move up, they get the same thing. I told you, I added everything that the Webster Middle School had that we were missing. We expanded on our health and nurse section. We were missing a lot of our policies, so we put those inside of there. Again, to mimic what the middle school had. Kind of lumped everything together. If you had looked at our handbook before, we had policies in the middle and in the end, and then follow-up at the back of the book on the same thing. So I've just made sure they were all together. We took out the use of lockers. We are losing two section, without C-section lockers, we're losing a ton of lockers. So like we did last year, we have the fishbowl empty. We'll keep it locked if students want to leave their things there. And I know teachers were really good with opening up their classrooms and leaving things, letting kids leave things in there for the day if they had played sports or whatnot. That's it. That's all I have for the changes. Any questions?
Well, it's clear there was a lot of time and effort put into reorganizing this handbook, even though the content is similar from last year. I don't have any questions, just the feedback that, you know, it looks well organized and really thoughtful.
If I can take an opportunity to just thank Ms. Neves and then the other assistant principals at our other two schools, Ms. DeCorcy and then Ms. Thompson, because they did a lot of work together in the district to align what student outcomes should look like based on the consequences within the book and it being aligned across for our families. And so I just want to say thank you. I'm sure that I speak for both of my principal colleagues in thanking them because that was a big undertaking. And I thank you as well, Chair Siddiqui, for recognizing their work too. Because it was hard work.
I think one of the big pieces is when we collect our data at the end of the year, we have now, since we're aligned, our next step is to work with Stacy Quilty to have our power school and ed handbook match these, the same language across the board from elementary school up. Although our, the consequences for the specific behaviors may be a little bit different from, as they go through the school years, at least the language will be the same. So when we pull data, it's, it's true data and it'll, we'll see how it flows.
Yeah, sure. The age-appropriate consequences. But that cross-pollination among the schools is really refreshing. It's great to see. Adds a level of predictability, I think, for families and for students. Any other questions or comments? No? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Bartlett High School student handbook as presented.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Laurie, would you please pull the committee?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion passes. Thank you to the whole team. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the Webster Middle School student handbook.
Good evening. So again, just thanking our assistant principals and our deans also, who are part of that. So Ms. Bergeron would have been here tonight to present, but she had a prior obligation. So there aren't a whole lot of major changes. Most of them are kind of updates on wording, updated letters, dates, et cetera. The major changes are pages eight and nine, updating our breakfast routine because we are offering hot breakfast this year and no longer doing breakfast in the classroom. So the procedures are there. Also, again, the parent pickup and drop-off parking, parking, driving procedures have been updated. And then our school attire, just one minor update with an addition of the Crown Act allowing students to wear hats or head coverings based on ethnicity with admin approval or admin, yeah, I mean, not approval, but making sure students aren't taking advantage of that, that there is a reason for it. And then we also added our yonder pouch program in the cell phone section on page 26. And then again, updated our disciplinary procedures to align with the high school and elementary school, that, that, that linear process. And making sure those aligned with the new laws that were implemented in February of 2023 in terms of suspensions and suspensions, in-school and out-of-school suspension. Questions or anything you need clarified?
Through the chair.
Ms. Mellet?
I do have a question because I'm a little confused. I was going to ask Chairperson Siddiqui this question because I thought we, last year, Bartlett had something about head coverings. And in the middle school handbook, it says not allowed, and it says headscarves. So it's on page 25, by the way, because I double-checked.
What page, Ms. Mellet? Sorry.
25. And now, and you just said, so I'm, I'm...
We will...
A little confused. They are or they aren't? Because we had it removed last year, didn't we?
Right, they should be allowed, I think.
Through the chair, I can address that if...
Ms. Peterson, please?
Yeah, go for it. Yes, correct. So we, that should be deleted. That was a missed, thank you for catching that, Ms. Mellet.
Thank you.
Okay.
So it should say, should read in the bullets halfway down, hats, hoods, bandanas, and headscarves should not be there. Do you see where we're looking? It's actually page 26, I believe.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Perfect.
As many eyes as are, as are on this, we always miss something.
Good catch. Any other questions or comments about this handbook for the Webster Middle School? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve it as presented with that one edit regarding the school attire for head coverings.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Laurie, would you please pull the committee?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion passes. Great job on that handbook. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the Park Avenue Elementary School student Good evening, Ms. Thompson.
Good evening. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Thanks. We have very few changes to the Park Ave handbook. Many of them are, you know, dates, staffing changes, new phone number extensions, et cetera. Our staffing list update is still in progress. We did make a change in the, our section on page 10, I believe, for the daily instruction, where our SEL is no longer part of our Unified Arts rotation. And that is going to be replaced now happily with, we have hired a library. So our library will be up and running and that will be the seventh rotation class in that block. The adjustment counselors will still be using the second step program and will push into classrooms as needed, particularly for the bullying prevention lessons and things that are just really like the non-negotiables. We did a little bit of work on our attendance section, again, to more align with Bartlett and the middle school in terms of numbers of absences that are allowed before parent contact is made, by whom the parent contact is made, letters being mailed out. We updated our class placement notification this year. Ms. Poliafico brought in an initiative where our schedule for this year was really set last year. Our class placement, the teams of teachers had an opportunity to work together. So students and families were notified of their placement for this year before school was out in June, rather than have to wait until like this week to find out, excuse me. We did some update in our PBIS description because we, this past year, we revitalized our PBIS efforts at Park Ave. So we updated our, our statement about that, our description to match that. We removed the term kid college under our behavioral expectations. Kid college was an initiative under Mrs. Parmley when she was here that we don't implement right now and have used other means of gathering the kids together to celebrate. We did remove the hats are omitted from our dress code. We have some students who wear them for medical reasons, emotional reasons. They're not a distraction, so it was just simpler just to just remove that. And Sarah Phillips, our nurse, worked on the life-threatening allergies part of our handbook with no nuts now at all in any classroom, basically in response to our, now our win block, which had been our walk-to-read block, where students really, they're, were no longer staying in their, their one classroom, but in other areas where they just really didn't have the same protections afforded. So nuts now will only be during lunch in the cafeteria. And then again, just open house date, report card... And then again, just open house date, report card date updates and that's really all Park Ave has.
Great. Thank you for that. Nice summary.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments from the committee? No? Well, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Park Avenue Elementary School Student Handbook.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you please pull the committee?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. And thank you again for all the work put into really thinking through how we want to, you know, inform kids about what they can expect for the school year and their families too. And the cross pollination is just, like I said, really refreshing as well. So great job, everyone. And the next item on the agenda is the Coaching Handbook. Good evening, Mr. Pronto.
Good evening.
I'm not sure.
Mine now. I don't think you need mine anyway. So we didn't have many changes either. The biggest ones was, we had some things that said Bartlett High School or Webster Middle School on there. So we just made it a little bit easier and just put Webster Public Schools on there. The biggest change was, was out of the student handbook was the, because of the block scheduling, we had to call the MIAA, find out eligibility, and then we found out that two out of the four, and then the biggest caveat would have been from the spring to the fall. So we didn't want to allow these, the kids to only pass four classes because they could do that without moving and then staying back. So we wanted to make sure that they had to move on to the next level. So that was the biggest thing with that. Other than that, everything stayed pre-status quo in the student handbook, I mean, the coaches handbook. So I'm sure there's a lot of questions about the fall though, so that's why I'm here. So I'll wait for the motion to approve the coaching handbook first, and then we can talk about the fall.
Thank you, Mr. Pronto. Any questions or comments regarding the Coaching Handbook?
Through the chair.
Yes, Ms. Mellet?
I was a little confused by it. Is this a combination coach-athlete handbook? Because it seemed that way to me.
Well, it is because we changed it from the, from the handbook. It just was the coaches handbook. So we are allowing everyone on the district to see it through, for the athletics too. So we want the parents to be able to see that also. So that's why we changed it from the coaches handbook to the coaches athletic handbook. So it's a little bit more than what we just have in our student handbook now. So I leave it, it's a litany of other things that are on there right now, from transportation to eligibility, to where they can find it from websites also. So I think it helps the parents out right now as well as the student athlete.
And what coach responsibilities are too.
Correct.
I think that's a good idea.
We're not trying to hide anything. We want to make sure that the whole district is able to see that too with our coaches handbook.
That's great.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for pointing that out, Ms. Mellet. Well, in light of that question, I'm actually going to ask for approval of the Coaching and Athletics Handbook. Any motions for that?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you pull the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Yes, motion passes. Thank you for presenting that, Mr. Pronto. And you also were going to share with us some information regarding fall sports?
So I'm sure there's a lot of questions out there about what's going on with our fall sports and where we're going to play, as well as for the remainder of the year. So I'll try to be brief as possible with this. I'll start with the fall right now. Right now, currently, our varsity football team has taken over the Memorial Athletic Field because our locker rooms would be shut down. So we thought it would be a lot easier going up to the Memorial Athletic Field, which is our home field, and be able to practice there. Mr. Vizzetti has been very gracious with that, as well as Mr. Rakowski. Me and my, myself and our maintenance guy went up there and we did a practice field on the baseball field so we wouldn't be ruining the football field. Our football players are very excited to be up there. They kind of got their own little domain up there. The coaches are excited. They've, they've moved up a lot of their practice equipment and we're in the process of moving some of the weight equipment also for there. So that'll be their home base quarters for the next two years. So they're excited about that. Golf is mainly the same. It's at Harrisville Golf Course right now. Soccer program will stay here. Then I'd be able to utilize the locker rooms, but they also, they are able to utilize the bathrooms on C-section down there. So if they need to change out there. The training room facilities are still going to stay across from my office over there. So they'll be able to get their treatments and taping before they go out to the fields until the November 1st, the time when I'm getting booted out in my area. At that time, we were going to be going into A section across from the, from the, from the pods. And they will be able to get the training facilities there and be able to go out to the fields through the, the crosswalks across the building into the field area. Cross-country will stay the same. Middle school sports will stay the same because they'll be able to utilize the facilities over there for, they're keeping all their equipment. They've, in the past, they've utilized Bartlett High School for most of their equipment, but we have enough room inside the locker room areas, which are locked all the time, for our football programs, as well as our soccer programs. The coaches do a great job watching over the kids that are inside the locker room areas at that time. We have a great staff this year, as in, as in usual. And I think we shouldn't have any problems there. They work hand in hand with the staff over at the middle school and I'm sure that they'll continue to do that. What other sports are we? Volleyball will stay here on campus right now until November 1st, but the season is over before November 1st anyway, unless they make postseason. The girls have been informed, as well as the coach, that if we don't go into postseason, that the road games, I mean, any games will be on the road at that time. Normally in volleyball, everything is done by the first week anyway, so it would just be games going on at that time. If they're, if they're, if they need to practice, being on the building committee, we know that's November 1st is the date, but it's more like the second week in November right now. So I think they'll be able to stay inside our own facilities here at Bartlett High School. If something happens, we have to get thrown out. At that time, we can utilize Webster Middle School for a couple practices if we need to. Winter season, I'll just jump right into that right now because I know that's going to be the next question right now too, is where basketball is going to take place. Basketball, we're in the process of talking with Ms. Bedrow over at St. Joe's to utilize the facilities over there. I've already sent her the schedules. We're hoping that we're going to be able to maybe have, maybe one practice over there, as well as commandeer their facilities for our home basketball games for girls and boys. Our cheerleading will probably, right now, we're in the process, we're probably going to, hopefully, we'll go on the Webster Middle School courts over there on the backside of it. The mats are already over there. Our middle school cheerleading coach was also our high school coach last year too, so it should work out pretty well. I think over there, making sure the high school and the middle school don't mix and match though there, but we'll make sure that they have separate practice times. Practice times for girls, right now, we're looking at probably the, our girls program staying at Webster Middle School after the Webster Middle School basketball programs for, for night practices. And then our boys program will more than likely go with the Park Ave for the facilities over there. Everybody has been very gracious in helping us out. Obviously, the two principals at both schools right now know that we're in a disadvantage here at the high school and we will work hand in hand and I'm sure that we can keep this going, the pattern going and the flow going. So there's no disruption at that time too. Spring, we should be all set. Everything is outside, so there's, shouldn't be any disruption there. So I think that we have everything covered right now, pending that hopefully at St. Joe's, there's no problems there for our facilities. If there's not, then we obviously can reach out to our other parochial school and we also, you know, at worst, if we have to reach out to Nichols or Shepherd Hill or somebody like that. But I'm hoping that our parochial schools with Ms. Bedrow, because she's an alumnus from here and she knows what our situation is right now too.
Certainly helps to have those relationships across the community, across the schools. So that's great. And thanks for answering those questions before we needed to ask them. One question I think that is on people's minds is numbers for our athletes for our fall sports. Can you give us an update there too?
Yes. Unfortunately, again, our, in our girl sports right now, and it's just like I said, it's not here in Webster Public School District right now. It's across the country. But our volleyball numbers are up, in girls volleyball. They have currently, they have 35 girls signed up, which is great. Our girl soccer program is not good right now. We only have currently two girls signed up. We are co-op with Southbridge right now. We are looking at different avenues for this. I've been in contact with Southbridge AD on a, on a daily basis. Their numbers are very extremely low also. They had five signed up. Two showed up at practice yesterday also. We did all, reached out to Blackstone Millville because the AD over there, we, we were generous enough to help out two of their boys soccer players last year. He currently hasn't not got back to us yet, but I, I'm assuming that they are all set over there. Our next option for our two girls soccer players, if they so be, so deemed to do so, and I spoke to one of the parents so far, was either A, we're trying with the co-op with Southbridge and possibly with Blackstone Millville. They could play with the boys if they so wanted to. You know, they, they get practice time. And I know it's not an ideal situation and the parent was very understanding when I was telling him. And I also told him that, you know, at worst, you know, we'll keep your, your daughter involved right now. You know, we still offer volleyball, cross-country or cheerleading to make sure that she could try to do something slow anyway. He was happy with that, that I, we had those opportunities offered to her. Was disappointed, obviously, with the soccer numbers right now. As we know, soccer, even our youth soccer program in town here is struggling. You know, it's just something across right now that's, we're trying to build. I think our middle school, hopefully our middle school numbers will build, getting into that. There'll be something, it's been posted on ClassDojo, but we also have something that's coming out in the Webster Times Thursday about how the policy will be with Webster Middle School. Me and Ms. Peterson worked hand in hand with this and she had a great suggestion is that we've always had in past signup periods, Webster Middle School, having the kids wait, going for signups when school started, then having to wait. It just didn't work out. The kids were hanging around, were waiting for parents. So Ms. Peterson suggested, why don't we do signups during lunches? I think that's going to be great. I think maybe we'll get bigger numbers with that. So we'll start with lunch, the signup period for middle school will be on Thursday and Friday during all three lunches. And then we will start practices on that Tuesday, September 5th, somewhere around there, whatever that date is after Labor Day. And the coaches are all, all in place right now and ready to go. Speaking about coaches in place, I know I'm running around right now, but I'm thinking about things. Right now, with our girl soccer program, we have no coach in place. We've advertised it for four months and nobody has stepped forth to coach a team. So unfortunately, we do not have a coach for that team right now. The only other team that we're waiting on is our JV volleyball. We'd have no coach with 35 girls signed up right now. So Coach Daniels for the last two days has been doing on her own. We're hoping that when school starts, we can maybe push somebody into that position through the high school right now or at the middle school. So the principals know that we are in search of, for at least a JV volleyball coach. Because in reality, obviously, this girl soccer this year doesn't look promising. On a bright note, with our girls' middle school soccer program, you know, Coach Yarado will do a great job, but we have a person that's doing our boy soccer. Ms. Martinez is hoping for the future and she's willing to do some things on the outside or on Saturdays and Sundays to help the high school program because she's hoping that she'll be involved with the school district for a while and maybe build the soccer program because she's really gung ho and wants to get to keep that program going.
Thank you for those updates. I know it's hard, you know, you have the coaches in place for the most part, but it's getting the students. And you're right, town soccer is struggling too, especially as you, you know, with the younger ages, there's lots of kids. And as you get further up, I have a 12-year-old that's not playing town soccer this year because there's not enough kids for a team.
Yeah, it's unfortunate.
You know, so.
You know, it's something that's happening. You know, like I said, it's just not in our district right now too. As you know, from town soccer right now, everyone's merging and whatnot too because they're just trying to get kids the ability to play right now, but they're merging with, you know, Oxfords and Duddlys and Cheltenham's. It's hard right now.
Agreed.
It wasn't like it was in the past.
That's for sure. Well, it sounds like a lot of moving parts that you're juggling and making it all happen. So really appreciate your updates.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you. There's been a lot going on this summer between all the moves, all the building, all the emptying of stuff and planning on top of that, trying to keep on top of that for the upcoming year. So it's much appreciated. So thank you.
I'm just going to last, put out with one last thing though too. We do, we do have our chemical health night set for us, so if anyone's listening. We have our high school, which will be on Thursday, September 7th at 6:00 PM. We're getting our roster in place right now, so to speak. And then the middle school will be on Monday, September 11th at 6:00 PM in the Webster Middle School Gymnasium. Bartlett will be in the auditorium still.
Thanks for those updates too. That's helpful to have in advance.
You're welcome.
And we'll make sure those are on the website.
Yeah, sounds good. Any questions or comments from Mr. Pronto?
Through the chair. I just have one question. Thank you so much for all of that information. My assumption is that when school starts, the football team will be bussed from here to, okay.
Yep, that's a good question. I work hand in hand with AA Transportation. The ladies are great over there. So I talk to them on a daily basis with all the changes that go on. Karen and Linda have been great over there. So what we set up with that right now is that, you know, a lot of kids drive or, you know, they're going to walk, but we do have a bus available for them. She told me they're going to, one of the routes that go on School Street, they will loop back around and come pick up the kids. That's a bus before they go back to Park Ave.
Okay.
So we have a bus available for all the football kids going up to that Memorial Athletic Field.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Excellent. All right. Well, thanks once again.
You're welcome.
The next item on the agenda is the approval of two additional ABA staff at Park Avenue Elementary School.
Thank you. So Park Ave Elementary is looking for two additional ABA staff to support students coming in that need services. The Director of Student Support Services is recommending the addition of two positions and they will be built into the special education grant when she applies this ball.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments about this item? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve two additional ABA staff at Park Avenue.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, could you please pull the committee?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion passes. And the next item on the agenda is the acceptance of a donation in the amount of $15,000 from the Fells Family Foundation.
Yes, thank you. Mrs. Fells had reached out to me sometime at the end of last school year. She saw the article about us trying to revive the music program at the middle school and the high school. So she had reached out and wanted to make a donation for the music program. And during our discussions, he asked if there was anything else that we could utilize. Our schools are working so hard with our PBIS programs across the district and they're always looking for ways to give awards and give things back to the students and purchase supplies and stuff for their program. So I explained and talked to the program, talked to Ms. Fells about the program and she was very excited and offered to donate an additional $10,000 to use between the three schools for their PBIS program. So I just want to continue to thank Mrs. Fells for their support to our school district. They are just, I can't say enough thank yous to them for their support over the years. They continue to come back. They continue to say, how can I support your schools? What do you need? Please call us if you need something. We are here for you. So I just want to say thank you to Mrs. Fells. The money will be utilized and is greatly appreciated.
And also on behalf of the Webster School Committee, I also want to thank the Fells family for their incredible generosity for our schools as well. And with that being said, I'll entertain a motion to accept this donation in the amount of $15,000.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you please pull the committee?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion passes. The next item on the agenda is the approval of a fundraising organization, the Park Avenue Elementary PTO.
In your, in your packet, you have an application for the Park Avenue PTO. I am excited, I'm excited to have that and I look for your approval. They are a great support system to Park Ave and they have been rebuilding over the past couple of years. And we are pleased at their progress and their willingness to support our students at Park Ave.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments from the committee about this? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the fundraising organization, Park Avenue Elementary PTO.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you please pull the committee?
Heather Mopless?
Yes.
Prada?
Yes.
Number five?
Yes.
What?
Yeah.
Yes, motion passes. And thank you to the, the members of the Park Ave PTO for revitalizing this program. And, you know, they make a lot of things happen around the school and it really breathes life into the elementary school. So I know I for one. And it really breathes life into the elementary school. So I know I for one look forward to the events and appreciate all that they do. The next item on the agenda is the approval of surplus items. We have a number of items here. Do you want to run through the list, Mrs. Prangeli? I was about to.
Go for it.
Run with it. Really? Okay. All right. There's seventy-five student desks and chairs from the Webster Middle School. Thirty plastic rolling chairs, also from the middle school. And then there's, there's an inventory of outdated textbooks in our packet, also from the middle school. How did I do? Any questions about these items? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to declare surplus. The items, seventy-five student desks and chairs, thirty plastic rolling chairs and outdated textbooks from the Webster Middle School, and to direct the Assistant Superintendent for Business and Finance, or the superintendent in this case, to find, to auction off, donate or otherwise recycle or dispose of these materials in conjunction with the provisions of Massachusetts General Law 30B.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, could you please pull the committee?
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Yes. The next item on the agenda is the review transfer signing of warrants, bills, payroll and vouchers.
Nice.
I, I will entertain a motion to enter into executive session according to Mass. General Law 30A, Section 219A, to conduct strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions and contract negotiations with non-union personnel, and we will reconvene in open session.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you please pull the committee?
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Yes. Hello, we are back. We've adjourned from our executive session and we're back in regular session. We had three items to discuss during our executive session and we now have a couple of more items to deal with. The first item that we have left is the approval of a contract and appointment of business manager.
Thank you. I would like to recommend that the school committee appoint Ms. Lisa Kontos. That's the new school business manager for the Webster Public Schools. Ms. Kontos is a local resident. She has been a very active community member, is very well invested in the school department in the town. She had previously served as a school committee member years ago. She's also currently serving as a selectman. She comes with a strong background in IT business and she has a business scent, but she also has a good understanding of our school community and our financial community. And I think she will be a tremendous asset to the school system and I look forward to working with her.
Thank you, Mrs. Prangeli.
Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments about this? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the contract and appoint Lisa Kontos as our new business manager.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you please pull the committee?
Abstain.
Yes.
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 Yes, motion passes. Congratulations, Mrs. Prangeli, and congratulations to Ms. Kontos. I know this has been a long time coming to fill this role and we're very excited to be working with Ms. Kontos.
Thank you, and I know she's extremely excited to start this new venture and I know she's gonna do a wonderful job. I'm excited to work with her.
Great, thank you. The next item on the agenda is an approval of an increase in cafeteria staff hourly wages.
Good afternoon, oh, good afternoon, good evening. So as proposed in our session, I'd like to increase the cafeteria wages by fifty-eight cents an hour for this current school year and then next year it would be the appropriate, adjust the salary scale by the appropriate agreed-upon percentage.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So I will entertain a motion to approve that fifty-eight cent per hour increase to the cafeteria staff hourly wages as Mrs. Prangeli presented. And then we'll adjust the following year accordingly based on the new scale and in line with the current percentage for FY '25.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you please pull the committee?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion passes. And the final item is the approval of an addendum to the superintendent contract. So this is an addendum in recognition of some of the additional responsibilities that have been carried out during some vacancies and extenuating circumstances. I'll entertain a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you please pull the committee?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion passes. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you please pull the committee?
Yes.
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 Yes, meeting adjourned.